This conference will now be recorded.
If anything, yeah, most likely we'll be in discussion item and in action item. Because that way staff, public force will give us a discussion overview of what the guidelines are and we'll take it to action. See where things is.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. No further comments. There's no further public comments. I'm gonna move on to question item. Today we have our work session, our first work session. Hopefully, the goal of this plan will continue to have one until we're satisfied with the plan that we put in place to address our current financial and structural situation that we have with the city. So today, our objective for the committees with our work session is to lay out the foundation of what is in front of us and how we're going to address it. We will focus on. We will focus on the weaknesses first. The first one will be our finances. Not to say that our finances are not structured pretty. We're doing well with our finances, we're okay, but it is still weakness because we have a product system, we have some systems that need to be worked on. But also debt, future debt and so forth that we need to address. And while we're saying that, I prefer to do that as weakness because there is a lot of debt that we have out there that we have to, we do have to address. Public Works Department, water and wastewater. We have a lot of infrastructure and equipment that needs to be updated. Great staff will also report that. And the police will be the final one, which Chief David will address. These are our three main weaknesses. We've talked about, we've talked about MDD or motor vehicle parking, it's structurally sound. We've talked about our building and so forth with the water department. We have good act, trained staff. We're not neglecting the fire department. They're, they're doing well financially, but the future with the fire department lies in the new hospital living unit. And Hobbs, and how much does that affect our finances there? Are we still gonna be making the ones to love it and cheap as slipping into making sure we have a plan to address that? Or how much are we gonna have a loss in that? Like I told you, I don't wanna wait to work under crisis or whether we'll work under the plan or using a structured plan for us to ensure that when that time comes, if there's losses that are being made, we already have something in place to address that instead of trying to address it at the last minute and start cutting staff or whatever. To ensure that we're financially okay there. But all the other departments we have addressed, parts, reps and so forth, pretty much what we have in place right now is adequate. But these other three are, are weakness. We are seeking out funds with bonds, either refinancing bonds. Looking into that right now currently. Also, we had the give back to work funds from the Fed. They're out there and right now, we're currently working with the state and the Fed to see what type of infrastructure available to pay for some of this infrastructure, pay for some of this equipment that we'd be needing in the future. About the near future within the year. Their first, probably right here in November, we're gonna focus on what we have outlined for, for that and what we're gonna be requesting. Bonds, we have not talked to the bonds yet. We have a fund with them next week. Treasury Chief David and Executive Board and I will have a meeting with them on our bond situation, see where we stand in bottom line. The master report, I just got, we got a phone call with them earlier for the master report. The costs need to go up because the cost of inflation has gone up, but they're gonna do all the adjustments. The payment we have that's coming up, it's already been addressed, not through us, which is part of our money set aside. It will affect us because in the long term, for every dollar we get back for the new master report, we have to set aside an ex amount of money that we borrow from in that bond to, for these, for last year and this year because of COVID delayed the project. So both the funds were available for bad, bad times, but we have to replenish and ensure in case we have another bad time, we have the funds there available. But I just wanna address that today, we have to, I strongly encourage the board of commissioners that we, and I know everyone takes it serious. That we find, take a whole different course than what we're taking currently. Our GRTs have not increased in the last 10 years. And that we have an average of seven million in the last 10 years that we receive in GRTs. We're operating at a lower cost 10 years ago than what we're doing now. Just in payroll alone, since 2015 to 2001, payroll has gone up 1.8 million dollars. And payroll that includes benefits, PRA, insurance, you name it, everything that includes has gone up, but our GRTs have not gone up. So just, just putting that figure in front of you, meaning that we're only getting seven million in GRTs in the last, on average, in the last 10 years. You know, within a year or two, we're not gonna be sustaining the current budget that we have currently have right now. We've put it to the lowest we have. We don't know what GRTs are gonna be looking at next year, but even if they, they rose another million dollars, it's still, on average, like I said, on average, in the last 10 years, it was seven million. So how are we gonna operate the future for loving with, with that type of GRT? We have not gone on our taxes in 10 years. I'm not suggesting we go off our taxes, I'm just saying that we have not gone on our taxes. So that's another factor that's out there. We haven't adjusted to inflation, the cost of inflation. Costs of goods have gone up, payroll's gone up, insurance, you name it, everything's gone up, but we have gone up. We're not a business, so we can't go up on our prices every year other than our water, we gotta address our water and our wastewater and so forth. But, but we're not, but as a governing entity, we're not, we're not in for profit, you know, that, we're not a business, so we cannot. We're getting, just what we do go up on has to, has to address what we have in front of us. Yes, money set aside for mistakes and for other equipment failure, but we're not a business who makes profits. So we have to take that in fact, we're not a business, we just can't go up every time inflation goes up. If that was the case, I mean, our tax rate would probably be 15%, so 7.2, 2, what is it, 2.5, something like that currently. So just, we gotta take everything into factor. I just want us to plan now, want us to wait two years to work under crisis or really work under plan because we've seen what we've had to do in the last six months. I think we've worked under crisis instead of a plan. And I wanna see the future of loving to be brighter and see what we can lay out as board of commission and lay out a good foundation for the coming years for city of loving. Of going yield and have a treasury dog start hopping his finances.
Yes, I've given you all the financial that I gave you all on last, or this Monday. See, almost, it's the same numbers, unless something's changed. I just gave you all more of the gross receipts tax the last 10 years and the bond payments. Just like you said, we're looking for future expenses to get ready for them. We're trying to be ready for them, which the next bond payments will be in November, which are around the amount of $700,000, which will be in November. We also have a couple of projects that have to be done by no later than June of this fiscal year, such as the Jackson, the Jackson Street project, which is around $507,000. And also, we need to get the Main Street Wayfair signs, which is $31,000. Other projects that we need to start looking into are the City Hall's security and fire system, which we're planning, designing and.
And equip.
And equip this round, we have $200,000. Also, the air control, which will be around $120,000. We're planning, designing, equipped. And lastly, would be the water tower, we're just designing, which is $70,000. But right now, the ones we have to start looking at are the Jackson Street project and the Wayfair signs. They need to be done by the end of the year, this fiscal year.
What was the cost on the Jackson Street again?
507. Also, we need to look at more expenses in the, we need to start prioritizing departments. One would be police department, water, wastewater. We need something for the wastewater plant repairs there, we need to grant to those as well. And also the water lines to just be prepared for those. And lastly, we need to keep in mind our reserves. We met our reserves this year, well, we met our reserves this year because they waived the, waived the reserve, waived the reserve requirements. And I don't think they're gonna be leaning this year on the requirements, well, next year, I guess, next fiscal year. So we just need to be more cautious on what we spend on the next, for this year. And that's all I have right now. But we just need to be ready for big expenses in the next year.
On the Jackson Avenue Road improvement, we are meeting with the nurses, some of the chicks we told, not the, the surgeon.
20 seconds.
20 seconds.
Okay, 20 seconds.
We'll be meeting with them, it's just a time frame for that because we only have less than a year to clean that project, so we will get a time.
What was our portion of that Jackson Street?
507. That's our portion of it, that's what we provided, we provided them money.
I believe that it was 100% funded.
100% funded, so, okay, so, okay, I'm just making sure I understand what you mean.
And what it is, it was split in our office and we have to provide the money because the money was in the city's back office. So we have, it's not from the state, it came to the state, went to our account, now we have to look from our account.
We have to pay for it. If we do not do the project, we have to pay that money back.
The Wayfair signs?
Yes. I'm working on it, well, she just left.
It was all grant funded, all of it completely grant funded. We're just the fiscal agent for the facility. We pay for it, they reimburse us back.
Which me and Chief are actually working on that right now.
I think that has to two, two years.
They have to be spent out by this year. They are, it's been two years in the works already. Yes, so it has to be done by this year.
And just like I said, we need to get ready for the bond payment, which is $700,000. And that's not including the master report, which y'all already talked about.
I think, just to make the overall, thank you to our clients here. During the past couple of months, this may be, in the remaining amount, to the last goal was 184,000, ended up being 174,000. It was a cost of 40,000, they did agree, they did agree to payment, which was $30,000 less. We also received 10,000 from the, from the courts because we didn't have the limitations. So we had to re, we also had to refund 10,000, so it was a cost of 40,000 with the, so the total amount was 174,000. We even have to pay out on the remaining amounts of the fire department.
And that came out of the capital projects, as LCM knows.
And also, all our insurances were due, it's the new fiscal year, so all our insurance is free to do. So it cleaned a lot of ones that we had currently available in our accounts. So I think the point across it, the treasury dogs are making it, cleaning a lot of our hospital rooms. We gotta be cautious, we now in a, because we have 700,000 dollars bonds, we have a seed we paid now.
Like I said, we just need to start prioritizing departments on what we need to be spending on.
I also wanna mention that I also talked to Treasury Dogs about making a pay structure for the city of Loving. Where we are not just going up on cost of living raises every year, it'd be a pay structure would be addressed every three years. Where employees will, every three years, go on a certain, have a certain rate on pay increase, so they can look forward to, they'll go to the city, within three years will be their pay increase, and then after that, another additional three years will be their pay increase. I think that would be a lot more easier to manage, manage our budgeting for each fiscal year if we have a pay structure and license there. Just one person getting 14 dollars, you gotta get 16, you know, going back and forth. And by the time you know it, you probably have a balance with your pay because you don't have a structure in place. So I think we need a pay structure in place, payroll structure in place, where it's easier for us to budget. And that's what we know, within the future, where our pay scales will be at versus trying to just budget for, who gets to figure out how the employees this way. I think it'll give us some sort of incentive for them to stay on board with us and they'll see whether they're paying increasing. The cost of living wages, I think we'd like that, we could get a good surplus in GRT one year, the next year we can have all that, all that. You know, that 3% and 5% we get, it's not, it's not, no longer there. And also, the insurance premium, premium job, I can wipe that out. So I figured it's best just to have a pay structure in place, that they can plan as well, we can plan on how they're gonna pay the house when they're in. Based on, on some sort of rate increase every month of cost of living. It should be, and that we're just not finding, financing is strong enough to, to put that out there. But it's just, it's just once you work too much, only guess, oh, perhaps tomorrow, we'll be went from 8.0 to 4.5. It's like what we're at right now, our GRTs are still coming in borderline right now, they're borderline. We're definitely covering, they will definitely cover all our liabilities, but we're borderline because GRTs are borderline because COVID as well as COVID gas is still. Even though the price of oil is up there, it's still moving, it's still.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Mr. Dogs.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Anthony, this is like a two-pronged, two-pronged question.
Yes.
Have you heard of the Employee Retention Credit? And would that be applicable to the city of Lovington?
I have not, but what is it called again?
Employee Retention Credit. It's a federal program that basically provides monies to entities who were able to retain employees through the credit, through the COVID virus pandemic. And there are certain criteria that has to be met, but they've relaxed those requirements apparently. But it is something that I think we can look at. It's called the Employee Retention Credit.
Okay, I can, I can look into that for sure, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And I wanna mention, today is laying down the final foundation, so a lot of this stuff you can absorb today and come back with suggestions to him and land for the city of Lovington. So it's not like everything we talked about today, it's gonna be implemented. Thought about taking this home, think about maybe, finally, that's on, on what you believe we can, we can, how we can operate more effectively. Of course, we've done major back, there's one that was announced. Or in eight months from now, I guess that's how we're thinking.
Yeah, we're just trying to be cautious.
What is this done, break?
From July 1st to now. As I said, I just wanna make sure we're cautious about spending in the next year, so we're not running around with our heads cut off in June, trying to find reserves and ways to find, ways to find the payroll expenses. I just wanna be cautious, is what I'm trying to push.
Is that money with the 70,000 for the engineering for the water tower? Is there any funding available for that or not? Starters, outside source grants, anything like that?
Well, I have not personally looked into that, sir. I know that was on the ICIP and the money was given to us for the design. I know currently it's still on ICIP, up on back for the building of that site. But there possibly is through the water and wastewater branch or drinking water bureau that could possibly have some of those funds available to build. As far as the percentage of, just currently right now, as Mr. Dogs said, we do have one grant. It was to rehab the, it was the drinking water, the New Mexico Finance Authority Drinking Water Bureau. And I believe it was 3.2.5 to 3 million dollars that we took out back in 2008 to redo the water system. So I don't know if that's something that we could go back on and say, if we would like to increase it, just roll it together for some of these projects in water.
There's also another program like Mayor Tridio mentioned earlier. We, we've had several meetings today with several different people trying to get the different funding from different areas. We, with the Council of Government, we met earlier, there's a program called the Economic Adjustment Assistance Program. We are in talks with them to try to find some of these projects for, basically, if they really fit for them is anything that would help them in a try to just grow, such as the water towers, the lines and stuff like that. So we've been, we've been dealing with that, they are helping us with that. I told him prior earlier, he needed just to get with me tomorrow so we can figure out the paperwork for it and they will assist us with, with that portion of it. But we are, we are looking for additional outside funding for those particular projects that meet those qualifications.
Is there anything that I don't know if there is anymore or not as far as with COVID? Before they were saying with COVID, as far as water systems, water lines and everything, they will provide you funding for that.
That's part of, it's part of this whole thing here, is, there's like six different, six different topics that they cover there that actually, we're looking at, we're looking at some tourism monies as well to maybe upgrade some of these builds that need to be upgraded, bathrooms, the lighting, the bleachers, that kind of stuff. So we are, they are, we are looking at several different ones, but as far as that particular one, I'm assuming that it's all rolled into that because it's all COVID-related project funding. So I'm assuming that's what, what that is.
It's referred to as American risk and climate, investing in America.
They just literally, we met with them not even three hours ago, so.
Right. I appreciate getting someone.
I will forward that to you first, yes, sir.
And now, I wanna understand this because I thought our water lines were paid for. I thought we had the money for that as far as the construction.
For Main Street?
Right.
The state of New Mexico today was a little over $800,000 for that project. We are responsible for the remainder of that project.
So we didn't have the funding there?
We've never had.
I thought we did.
We have until the completion of that project, which would be.
Three years?
Four and something days to come up with the remainder of that project for that, the funds for that. We are looking about 400, I believe, a little, little over 400? For the entire project?
On the water line.
1.3. 1.3.
And I think, I think, go back to Commissioner Boggs, in the beginning we did, cost went up. And that, that sort of thing, the thing, because at first, we had a problem with the money, it was delayed, delayed. And we had it paid and then lost it, now they come back, reassess, cost has gone up, now we're out 400,000. Same with the master report, it's a little over, little over 1 million more to the source now. But that's all the state is taking here that.
That project, the grant funding that I was mentioning earlier, it is, one of our priorities is to see if they qualify for the remainder that is owed on that, as well as the water tower and any other infrastructure upgrades or future expenses.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir.
Another question I had. I had it a minute ago.
Do you remember?
Well, I do remember, with the wastewater, the money in the wastewater fund, that stays in the wastewater fund, that can't be used for anything else, right? Am I correct?
It has to be used for that, but the only way it can be moved out there is with y'all's approval or a budget, budget, budget adjustments.
Right.
That's the only way it can be moved out of there.
I was just wondering, as far as the wastewater fund, right now, we have a positive in there. And I understand we have a lot of issues with our wastewater treatment plan. Is that any way that some of that money in there?
We are currently working on that. I do have some stuff wrote down. As you guys, a couple of weeks ago, I did give you guys the breakdown of it and reading through it. And myself actually being out there and working with the guys. Currently, right now, our bar screen, it does say that our bar screen is down. We're currently waiting on the material for the motor replacement and everything like that. Just got another quote sent to me this morning from the company to replace all the rollers and pins and bearings for the slide track assembly. And what is totally, for the motor bearings, then come out here, everything, brand new rollers and everything, totally rebuilt besides the main structure. It's gonna be $32,000. Brand new one, more, this is a horizontal up and down slide face. The one that is described in this report, they are talking about a lay down machine. It's a little bit easier working, doesn't have that strength going up. I haven't got on there and actually looked at the pricing on there, but they said it's upwards of $250,000 to $300,000. We definitely have to have an engineer come in and look at the structure and where it's at and deleting the other one and putting a new one in. So currently, right now, we have work done, I believe, five years ago on this bar screen. So that's, it's five years ago, we spent probably about $15,000 on the motor, the bearings. We did not do the rollers back then, but currently, right now, the rollers are getting flat and that's what's causing the bearings to go out. And so they recommend it highly to do that. So it might push us another five to six years, possibly 10 years. When the plant was built in 2006, that was brand new. Little by little, over the next, 2006 to current, it's 14, 15 years that it's been in operation. And we probably put another 30, 40,000 dollars in that bar screen just itself. So another 30,000, well, it might last us another 10 years on it. But they do recommend going with a different style to clean it better. And that, the bar screen, if you guys have never been out of the plant and kind of know, the bar screen is the primary, what keeps everything going. Sits everything out and cleans everything up prior to going in the pumps and pumps, going in the SBRs, which transfers over to the digesters, transfers over to the screw press, goes out to the pump. So everything that we can catch up front is less go through the pumps and less that'll eat it up and wear it down. So currently, right now, we are eating that as soon as the PO is approved and going through. They have the supplies in stock, they'll be out there within the next two weeks. But moving forward on that is, there is the SBRs, deration basins, we do have two of them out there. Within that report that I gave back in May, $160,000, just to have them come in, totally knock one of them, pardon, knock them down, but we'll take one of them offline. Pressure wash everything out, get it cleaned, totally brand new aeration basins throughout the whole system. And at the same time, while they're down, I would like to definitely look at the structure on the walls and go ahead and have them spray coated or some kind of a poly coating or something on the walls just for longevity of the, of the concrete. And so that's why I have roughly two hundred thousand dollars in free work in SBRs. Hundred and sixty of that was just on them coming in and buying the heads, aeration, everything like that. This, in the, in the report for, after it goes from the SBRs, it goes into a digester. It sits there and digests and we suck the water off of that, send it back to the headworks. From the digesters, we've put it into a screw press. A screw press currently right now is not big enough to withstand how much sludge we have in our digesters. So they recommended a secondary screw press and they brought up a, I remember back, I believe, in two thousand and ten is when we got that one. And it was of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. So we can go with roughly about the same size or get a very bigger one and use that one as our backup at the front.
Do we have any way of keeping that excess water out?
Excess water out of?
Environment coming into the system?
No, currently the stormwater as far as coming in, no, sir, we don't. I just, I sat through twenty four hours with the training this week. Part of it was wastewater, part of it, and that was one of my main questions that I asked one wastewater instructors. They were talking about the vents on top of our manholes. And I asked them, I said, well, doesn't that the influence or the influx of stormwater coming into our system, which is, we're not supposed to have? And he says, it's almost like a sacrifice that you have to venture systems so the pipes don't get built up full of the ammonia and everything down and start ruining your pipes. So you, you kind of, you take one, take one for the team and take a little bit of that in just to get your system flowing. And it actually, we do, we, during rainwater situations, we can go from seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, up to eight hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day at, during that storm. So we do have an influx of stormwater coming in, but currently right now at the plant, it doesn't. It's a two point five gallon. So we can hold it for expansion.
Commissioner Boggs, to answer your question on finances on that investment in America communities, we were putting before the question. They had suggested we request two million with a matching fund, five hundred thousand. So the five hundred thousand we did was one point five, we were investing five hundred, they were investing one point five. I'm hoping to get an answer in November. The first one we set up for October, who will be that, they might just very, their first one out of this American, investment in America, that's going to be their very first one that they will be all things about. They got it to me already set first time. So the next one is in November. So hopefully we have an answer in November and how we request, hopefully if we get two million dollars out, definitely here, here obviously, that, that's, that's what we're doing. So when you get to see this report.
We just have to remember that the, two of the bonds are coming out of that wastewater and water fund as well.
For those payments.
Those payments.
Payments.
Yes, sir. We just, let's keep them under there. Those are the ones that Wyatt mentioned earlier that aren't there.
But you know, when you request all these grants, it's not like you have to use that funding that's there. It'd be used, sometimes it takes you within ten years or three years. So I guess it's time to time.
I have one other question, as I know I asked the other night, we're going to talk about wastewater. As I read your report here, what's going on with test twelve number five?
I'm sorry. Or anybody have anything else for finances before we move on to?
No, you're sorry, no.
Would we have anything else?
Here you go.
Commissioner Collins, you're good with finances. We're going to move on to water department.
Yes, I'm fine. Thank you.
Next item, it's wastewater, Commissioner Boggs, do you have a question?
Sorry, sorry. I apologize everybody here. It's on a roll. That's why we're trying to go to one of them.
Well, currently, as, as the report states, back in, I believe, a year and a half ago, we built a new well, which was going to be a secondary well for monitor well five. Our drying beds, where our drying beds sit, our two big ponds sit in the corner, right in the corner of those drying beds where the simple, or, our effluent water goes out, our drying beds, our old drying beds sit right in the corner where those two beds are. So the state, we have the old monitor well five right in the corner of that. Well, they're saying that the influence of the drying beds is affecting down gradient from the monitor well five. So the monitor well five was, it's an old two inch monitor well. So they went and had, so city commission approved for the well to be drilled out to, I believe, four or six inch. So we could possibly pull more, a little bit more water out of that. We're going to pump it into the drying beds or into the ponds. I'm not exactly sure what Mike had planned, but currently right now, we are still sampling that well. It is very high in nitrates and that's the, the deal on that one. We're currently working with the state on that, getting their report to them to clean up. Either take out the drying beds and go ahead and do an interior surface, which is blacktop asphalt. Kind of clean that up so nothing else will penetrate down through those drying beds and go into monitor well five or down into the. So we are currently working on that plan to get to the state.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Why didn't you want to go? Open your discussion.
I've already talked. Mayor Commissioners, as, as it kind of states through, we did have back in June twenty seventh of two thousand and twenty one, we had an outside agency that is kind of working with the state, come through and do a walkthrough of our facility. The report is very detailed. He made some very high suggestions of what we need to do and kind of we implemented that in. As far as some of our digester times, our ramp times and everything like that for the mixing. We still currently do have, both SBRs are up and running. They are airing and mixing. We have one sludge pump that's currently down and one basin, so it's, it's still doing the work. It's just not pumping the sludge out. We have that quote from Odessa pumps to get a new one in. It would just be almost six to eight weeks out. Currently right now, digesters, we are digesting the water off, sending it to, and making sludge, going throughout that process and making wild cats, yeah, which is our compost. Other than that, we are, we're very, I know currently right now, or two weeks ago, you guys gave the permission or approval to hire, two more personnel out there, which will give me six personnel. Out of that six personnel, they'll give another foreman or actually a supervisor position, a level four operator to kind of ease the, to run the plant the way that it is needed and that'll give him four, four personnel out working the plant and then one lab tech operator. Currently right now, I have one, I have the lab tech, which is Barry, and I have one personnel. Currently I have one that's fixing to be hired on. We'll find out Monday, but I have one quick meeting today. For a better job. So I'm still, I have two personnel out of six out there, so I'm missing four people out of the wastewater. But other than that, as I did in the report, it does state, I have exactly what page it is on. About qualified personnel. And then facility, right there on the facility staffing, that treatment facilities of our size and type in New Mexico are typically staffed by, four to five operators involved with this operation, maintenance, laboratory testing, permit reporting and other functions of the treatment system. These operations are not tasked with other duties related to the treatment plant. So that's just at the plant itself. All my operators, they do collections, their stations, plant operations, everything. So the state is recommending four to five be out of the plant at all times. And then have at least two to three, possibly four in collections to run the daily operations outside. Currently right now, I understand that we've, we've worked off of seven personnel since I've got here, which is two thousand and seven, and we've been able to manage it. We just, we're short in personnel out there. Currently, as it does state in there, the new bar screen, as I discussed earlier, we're currently getting the new one. The current one we have, we're getting it back up in operation. It is taking another twenty one thousand dollars to get all the rollers and air, all the pins and all the track system, realigned and everything back up and going. The motor and the bearings and everything was an additional, I believe, ten thousand. So we're looking roughly at the thirty two thousand to get that fully hundred percent back up and running. He said this before, it might take five to eight years with the general maintenance and everything else before we adjust normal wear and tear going on that. In that, on the secondary, like I explained, the hundred and sixty thousand to rework the SBRs and total aeration basins to go in and rework and everything, I roughly have it listed as two hundred thousand. So we can go ahead and go in there, blast everything out, get all brand new, the sides cleaned up, have somebody come in and put a coating on the side so they do stay, for another fifteen to twenty years. Secondary off of that, I put another fifty to seventy five thousand for the new sludge pumps, mixers, all the stainless steel chains. We're going to take it down, let's go in and redo all the chains and everything else. They've been in there for years as far as getting everything back up and running on that. The secondary screw press, I have listed at two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. That would help us out in the, the final stage of being home compost. So the more water that you take out of it, which a screw press or actually, the current one we have right now is the screw press. It comes into the system and kind of goes around and filters it out and squeezes out the liquids. They fall down, all the solids go off the top. So it's a big old hog of it. They, they have dump presses, they have many different, and from what I believe, the gentleman that came, Mr. George, he said that the screw press is one of the most tedious ones. They always have issues with the rollers and everything. So he would suggest going with a different style. But going back on the plant, he described it when he was here like a, like a helicopter or a plane. He said, you barely blind them, but you go out there and you always constantly work on them. He said, you have to keep them in tip top shape to keep them going and making them go. He said, a plant that size and with the SBRs, he said, in ten years, which we're pushing in fifteen years, should have already been reworked once. And we have not, we have not been given that. Actually, it's not been brought forward to have this, have this done. So I'm bringing it to light as far as what we need done and having, having the money. So roughly seven hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand that, that could be done out there in the next five years. To be able to get that plant working for another ten to fifteen years.
What's the total cost? You said seven hundred to eight hundred thousand over five years?
Within the next five years, yes, sir.
What are you, what are you saying we got to spend in the next year?
In the next year?
Yeah.
We, currently right now, you can knock off the screw press, which is the two hundred and fifty thousand. Secondary screw press, you can knock off the two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred. And the current things right now, after talking with Anthony this morning, the thirty two thousand for the bar screen, we're currently operation, getting that worked. So that will hold us saying, normal wear and tear, it might last us another quarter or five to eight years. But the secondary thing that I think that needs to be done within the next year is the rework on the SBRs, the sludge pumps and the rollers. So we need to.
Let's say four hundred thousand in the next year?
I would say three hundred to four hundred thousand in the next year.
And that also include getting, trying to work on getting the guys, you know, another certification, is that, that even included in?
No, sir.
So that's just retired open.
Yes.
So we still need to look in to get more than one person out there with the qualification, the level four, three, or whatever it takes.
Yes, sir. Currently right now, the state in New Mexico, a plant our size, SBRs, you have to be a level four operator to be at that plant. Level four operator has to operate that plant twenty four seven. And currently right now, Barry Ferguson is our level four operator. He does all of our plant duties. He stays out of there at the plant, Monday through Thursday. So the ones that we do have out of the fields, they do the operations and they do the plant maintenance. Barry is there to assist them with the plant maintenance and making any changes to the plant, because it's a, it is, it's a one hundred percent fully automated plant. That he goes in, you make a change to the aeration and you knock it up five, five more, five more minutes. It might change the DO and water, the dissolved oxygen in the water. So it might settle more, it might go, come up faster. So everything needs to be done with Barry there, knowing it, because it'll change all the testings. But yes, currently right now is to have somebody there at the plant, a hundred percent, four to five operators would be the thing that the state is suggesting.
So what kind of cost are we looking at employee wise? For to supply that quality of, or the amount of employees the state is recommending? What kind of the increase in cost are we looking at there?
We're.
That's fine. You can get it to me later. I'm not going to drop it out of the air kind of deal there.
Well, currently right now, just a normal level one or not even a level one operator would come in, just a general maintenance coming in, is the sixty to seventy five thousand that I talked about. If we went out and hired a level four operator and had experience and everything, that's going to be pushing the hundred and two to the hundred and twelve.
So by the time you hire the, what do you say, five or six or eight employees, you're like a mill a year, increasing salaries?
Yes, sir.
Currently, Wyatt, so right now we have four positions that, that we have allocated for you, be field driving.
In those, in those.
Come a day. So you still have four that you're seeking out and four to be fielding. You have three there, so that's seven.
I have two, I will still have two short because I haven't.
I'm just saying, you mean that, that, that alternate four, probably if you had four positions plus your, your current staff.
So yes, sir.
Three on top of that.
On fully, to fully staff, each department would be seven. With the reduction in force that I got back, it'll give us six apiece. Currently right now, I am going to be four short and wastewater and one short in water.
That's looking forward to giving after the four, you're going to be, based on that article, I'm trying to compare what you, what we currently giving you was, you said you have four, so that four, four position opens, if we go, went ahead and opened up. Plus your current staff, off top of that, how many employees do you have to, to satisfy that?
To set, to satisfy that?
Yes.
I would be five. I would still be about three short.
Three, so it's three. Okay, so it's three more employees to satisfy that all.
Yes, sir. And that would be permanent, one hundred percent. They stay at the plant. And then I could have the two to three out in operations, collections, doing the, the stations, washing, all the day to day calls.
I think that's Commissioner Gandy was looking at total cost of, of what our current cost is and then plus that.
Yeah, with the level certification, that's what I was. Levels certification as far as level four plant operator, they like to see level four plant operators. It comes all the way down to the new guy, to the, to the other guy, or to the main, main person. Out there in the field, you have to be a level two certification to actually get into the collections, the agent, the collection system and pop manholes and everything. Live stations, operations, pull pumps, motors, everything. So currently right now, we would fully staff, maybe one, two. We'd have three. So I would still be roughly about three short in the wastewater facility. If I was fully staffed with the, the six.
Also on that article before, that they give you a time limit on when they want everything cleared, that's a recommendation.
Sir, it was just a recommendation. He's actually an outside agent that came in to do a walkthrough. He does report to the state. So the state gets the same report we do. So it's not, it's not a coming. We're going to red flag you. It's working with us and letting us know that, hey, this is what we see and we'll work with you a hundred percent. I actually emailed the gentleman two weeks ago and he asked me how everything was going and I. Actually, emailed the gentleman um, two weeks ago, and he asked me how everything was going and I told him that we're making some changes in the. In the aeration times to try to get what he suggested down, and we haven't seen that it made a difference yet, but we're still working on getting that. And uh, talked about the one employee that I actually had on medical leave on wrong, he was out there the day with us, so. Had him explain something about that and he sent his regards and everything, but currently, right now, there is no, um. We need to get the plan together to report to the state on what we're gonna do as far as the, the violation of monitor well five. So as far as the reporting back to the time period, um, with Mr. George, um, Robert George. He um, said that we can have that plan and state that within the next three to five years, we're gonna go ahead and. Get that impervious surface down, we're gonna take out those drying beds, we're gonna try to get those nitrates down in that monitor twelve five to get back in compliance.
So what type of staff you need to help you uh, lay down the, the plan?
No, exactly, and that's the one thing.
So if you need staff, or we need out, we need someone to.
And that's currently why I asked for the level four operator. Um, somebody that has the knowledge of being out there at a plant and working the plant. Um, currently myself, I've been watering wastewater for the last fourteen years, but primary has been in water and. Um, last six years, I've moved to all operations of outside source, streets, everything. So the current knowledge, I would definitely. Um, if we could branch out to somebody with a level four operations or um. We can all work together and kind of see, see exactly what that, what that's gonna take.
Chat to maybe some minister, I'll take a pause and see if they can assist us in aiding us and. A little bit, I rather have them talking in place and playing in place to Chris, to Chris. And so I'll, I'll. Talk with the city manager man on that, see if he can help us, because they have, they have reached out. Other.
Yes sir. So um, moving on off of wastewater, onto water, um, some of the, some of the things that we know, um, as far as water equipment. That's one of the, one of the things about the equipment for um, wastewater. We do currently have a new loader that was required, acquired. I believe it's only about six years old, seven years old. It's used mainly to move around our sludge and everything in their plant. Um, maintenance on them is a primary thing, you know, that maintenance, if it's not done, they wear out and they're not washed out there. They kind of get gunned up and overheated. So a lot of that is just um, getting the guys on a full maintenance plan and. Trying to get those equipment just so we can keep the equipment. But mainly, the main equipment was the. Some of the bar screens, pumps, motors, everything like that. Um, the equipment, um. Um, moving on to water, as discussed, um, we did do a full uh, rework of. Booster one and booster two back in two thousand eight. We totally stripped down the tanks out there. We coated them, had new floors put in them, some of the sections, um, on the walls were actually replaced. But uh, at booster one and booster two, so the two four hundred thousand gallon tanks out well filled, the three point one million gallon and the one point one here in town. They went through and actually totally reworked booster two, brand new pumps, motors, everything for the process to go out. The um, same thing at booster one, we have um, fifteen hundred gallon minute pumps at booster two. We have seven hundred and fifty gallon minute pumps at booster one. So we can move, we can move quite a bit of water. Um, that's in current, right now, the three point three, the three million gallon tank that was moved up on ICFP. Just for example, all three pumps running in town. Um, taking that water from the three point million gallon tank, I can, I can go twenty-four hours, I can go. I can go quite a while with having the water. If I keep on all three pumps out in the well fields and ship that water to try to fill these tanks. I got probably about, I'd say fourteen hours for the water storage. So that's why we have asked for that three point, three million gallon tank to be out, it's for more storage, to be able to ship water into town when. And have a capacity to, to have out there. Um, we do currently, um, the wells, we went through a process of, I think, it was about a year and a half, two years ago. We did have some funding for wells and um, equipped, designed, everything. We went out for a hundred percent design, RFP. And I believe we have three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars left out of four hundred thousand dollar loan, and they came in back at one point three million dollars each. So there is no way with our, or three hundred and ninety-seven thousand or sixty thousand that we couldn't even. Have one drilled and equipped. Um, currently, right now, we have three sites that have piping going to them. So we do have those alternative sites ready to go. Um, we built the pads on them. One site does have power going to, two sites do not have power going to them, so that would be an additional cost later on of having. Having the extension go out to those two sites. Um, as far as um, booster pumps and everything. Having the, we, we worked the booster pump on, there's three, there's, to give you guys a little more insight on booster two. We have two vertical, certain, or centrifugal pumps that actually lay down, and we actually have one because of the spacing, it stands vertical. We actually had to have that pump replaced uh, three years ago, three and a half years ago, because it just eats up thrust bearings on the bottom. It was twenty-six thousand dollars. It's always the newest pump that we have over there. Um, we actually went with a better quality and style pump than they originally did back in two thousand eight. So we haven't had no issues with those. They're, they're greased every other month, the thrust bearings and the bearings on them. Um, so we, we haven't had no issues with those pumps, but it is something possibly in the next five years. We're looking at about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand per pump. Motors aren't so bad, we can actually get those rewound for a pretty good, pretty good price. Uh, moving on with that, um, as everyone knows, water lines in town, the water lines, we're, we're getting. We're getting Main Street and Avenue B kind of, kind of taking care of with currently right now with the New Mexico DOT project. But throughout the alleys, throughout the alleyways and everything else, we do have a lot of different lines that are old. And different sections of town. So working with David and working with um, the mayor, um, kind of utilizing some of those funds. Would help us out and kind of pinpointing some of those areas that we need water lines replaced. And that's about it. I'm open. Any questions or suggestions or?
Yeah, I think I start planning process, like I know you keep missing five years. And that way you can eat a budget every year, put that in our budget uh, each year, each phase.
Mayor, you said of that American program?
Yes sir.
Are we able to seek funding?
For boat project, and they, they recommended a client to me, it's a five hundred thousand match.
Right.
And uh, it could, it doesn't have to extend, extend overnight. So uh, that's, that's a good part of it. So we've got a plan in place, and that's what they did ask too, we have to have a plan in place. So if we do that. Get the plan in place, present it to them, get a proposal to me, bring it in, uh, to supply, we'll pretty much take care of the water in this.
You said we weren't responsible for five hundred thousand?
Yes, but we, we gained one point five million.
Right, yes sir.
And uh, they, the only thing we would probably have to receive additional funds to the state is three million dollar, I mean, three million. Yeah, the tank and, and the water, we don't, cannot risk this cost as well.
Right.
But at least everything else will be addressed, and five year plan will be addressed, probably in three years, so five, you could have five years just in case. Uh, something else surprises. Commissioner Collins, you got anything else?
No, I've just been listening. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to uh, police department, Chief David.
Uh, yes sir, um, what I prepared is basically what you told me to, what you, what you wanted me to do here. Uh, just to give you an overview. Uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the police department had thirty-nine employees to include dispatch and the chief. Uh, la- uh, last year, we were budgeted for thirty six positions. Uh, this year, we've budgeted it for thirty positions. Out of those thirty positions, we have twenty-four that are filled. Um, so we have currently six openings at the police department. If you include the reduction in force that would happen last year, I have a total of six or total of twelve total positions. That were eliminated, or we have vacant right now at the police department itself. Um, I've been mentioning to mayor for a while now that that is, we need to get something addressed immediately, because it's fixing to be a crisis for us. Um, the staff has been um, working at full pay and hours. Based on the, on us being able to reduce, um, we're using some of those open positions monies. Uh, to cover for that funding, uh, where it's not costing the city, uh, additional funding that was already budgeted. But uh, with COVID and everything else, it's, it's costing us a lot more. Uh, currently, I have two. Out of those, uh, let me just repeat, let me preface that. Out of patrol division, I have thirteen people on patrol division itself, that includes lieutenant sergeants, every sergeant. Um, I have six dispatchers, two detectives, one at the task force, myself and an administrative that also handles the evidence. Um, that is your twenty-four positions. Um, currently have two out on, um. Quarantine, um, so it leaves me down to eleven on my patrol side right now, uh, to cover. Uh, four shifts, and so that's been the, the struggle trying to figure out how to, how to manage that. We are, um. Like I said, detectives are covering a lot of those shifts as well. Um, the lieutenant, I recently lost, uh. My administrative lieutenant, he went into his private business, and I lost, um, next week will be losing another one. That is also going to the sheriff's office. Currently, right now, through the process, we have two certifies, um, that are looking to, uh, to come on board. Uh, we are also testing, besides those two, we're testing four uncertifieds. The only issue with the uncertifieds is. They take us a lot longer before we can really use them on the streets. The police academy itself is six months. And on top of that, we still have our field training program that's at least three months. Um, so it's, it's a long process before we even get them out of there. Um, we are looking at different things, what we can do as far as uh, equipment to try to streamline a lot of that stuff. Um, I know some of you know, some of you did, probably didn't know, but um, our fleet, we're um, literally the only agency in the county that does not have. Um, mobile terminals in their vehicles to do reporting, um, have been like that for years. Uh, that does take up a lot of, uh, time from the officers having to, to respond to the scenes, take the calls, write it down, jot down all the information. Turn around, go back to the office and do the same thing on the computers. So it is eating up a lot of that time that we would be using elsewhere. It is an expensive project. We have, I have presented it numerous times, uh. For budget approvals in the past, it has also been, uh. Basically, that entire, the infrastructure over there was outdated completely. We were supposed to do a two-phase, um, project. We update everything at the department, um, infrastructure-wise, which we did. And then phase two was supposed to be the mobile terminals and wireless access and everything like that, to automatically download videos. Uh, and reports, um, to the servers at the police department. We, we never got to that. That was over, um. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the time, I'm sure it's probably a lot more than that. We have twenty, twenty-nine uh, vehicles to equip. Uh, with computers, uh, routers, um, hotspots, um. And all that stuff. So um, included in that was also, uh, when we do decide, if we ever decide to go to mobile, to the computer side of it. We must have, uh. Our current records management system is papers. We must have a mobile, uh, app that goes with papers. To allow us to use a remote access to the system, to use it out there. So that price did include that additional, uh, fee. It isn't, the only bad part is it's a yearly recurring maintenance fee, just like we pay now. So it, it is an additional cost on that end of it. We are looking for fundings like, like I mentioned earlier. Uh, for grants that will cover a lot of the potential, uh, law enforcement, equipment or personnel. Uh, we asked that individual, we were speaking to her earlier, there is no grants out there for law enforcement. With the exception, she said that you might ask the U, the USDA, they may be able to assist with. Potentially, um, helping with the purchase of some vehicles maybe. Um, just depending on the funding for the district, it's usually what they go base on. Um. Vehicles, and I mentioned vehicles, we have not had a vehicle since twenty seventeen. Was the newest one, and there was a canine unit. We were scheduled to get five cars that year, we ended up with one car. Um, the city has a vehicular, a replacement plan for the PD. That every year, they're supposed to replace five vehicles and the equipment on. Um, like I said, we have not received any since then. Uh, our fleet is, uh, my stuff, it's way outdated. Uh, we, we still are running on twenty-ten vehicles, we still have several. There's way over a hundred thousand on those vehicles. Um, and they are. To the point where they're costing us more money to keep them under the, to really, I wouldn't have worked. Um, it is, uh. Even the exterior of those vehicles, the paint jobs on those, they're, they're fading horribly. Um. So we probably need to, to replace the fleet. I did present to. I did present to the, um, previous administrations, not the last, well, we did the last one and previous one to that as well. We presented them with an option, a potential option of leasing every single police fleet. They would replace the fleet every five years to include the equipment. At the time, it was something to the two hundred. Two hundred and thirty, two hundred and fifty thousand a year with the option to purchase back at the end of the year, at the end of the fifth year. Or to continue to continue that program. I just depending, uh, the time they chose not to go with it because of the reoccurring payments on those fleets. Uh, but every five years, it would have received a total new fleet. Um, we are still exploring that option to see how much it's even gone up, or if they even offer those programs anymore. Uh, Ford at the time was the only one that was offering that type of program. Um, Ford is who we use on our fleet, that as it is, it's more reliable car, um, proven actual law enforcement vehicle itself. Um, so, so just to give you a heads up, fleet is gonna have to be addressed, the personnel is gonna have to be addressed. Um, equipment, like I mentioned, the vehicles, uh, even our security system on the inside of that facility. Uh, we still have the original cameras from nineteen eighty-four that were, um, installed back in the day. Um, still utilize them, they've updated a few of them that actually have gone out. Everything on the outside is brand new, um. Um, computer cameras, uh, with night vision. uh, with night vision on them. So those are completely updated. Um, world of difference on the screens. If y'all ever wanted to go by and look at them, just let me know. We'll go show you. Um, but that is gonna have to be addressed as well. As you know, we've had several incidents in front of the police department where uh, we can get anything because those cameras at the time were um, too distorted for us to even do anything with, so. Um, the other thing that we're having to look at is the security for the back of the facility. That is being funded through a grant, through a capital outlet project that we awarded this year. Uh, it's almost a hundred and fifty thousand roughly uh, for the uh, gates and the automatic, sorry, for the fencing and the automatic gates. That should hopefully, uh, depending on the cost of steel, hopefully still cover it. Um, we will reach out soon as we get the grant agreements from the state. We'll reach back out to see if that will, hopefully still coming in relatively close to that, to the, to that price that they originally gave us. Um, the other thing that we need to look at, we can still utilize, currently we can still utilize our canine for a few things only. We have a total of three canines with the city. We have one that's strictly explosives canine. That dog is uh, probably three years old, so he's fairly young. So he's good for a while. We have two other ones that are patrol dogs that are narcotics and apprehension. Uh, we can still use them for the apprehension side. Unfortunately, with the um, state of Mexico changing their rule or their law on the marijuana side. Unfortunately, those other two canines are um, cannot be used for deployment on vehicles. So those are gonna have to be replaced. They're roughly running fifteen to eighteen thousand. That includes the train, the trainer force as well as the housing for the individual other training. This does not include um, the per diem. So that is what we need to look at moving forward, just to get us back to where we need to be. And as you just need, my opinion is we need to continue to update and upgrade our campus structure, electronics, um, and that kind of stuff. Moving up into the future.
For which ones?
All of it together.
Um, you're looking at for the, for the patrol fleet, like I said, it, it all depends if we're gonna bomb individually. If we bomb individually, it, it gets expensive, way expensive. A, a car equipped, you're looking at about sixty-five, seventy thousand per car. It goes up from there if it's, if it's a canine unit that we have to replace, obviously because of the interior that we have to modify. Um, so if you do that, that's what you're looking at per vehicle. Um, but if, like I said, I'll check on the other side, the D side of it and see if, see if it's still available for law enforcement and see what price we get with poly, but then included in it as well. Like I mentioned, it was two thirty to two fifty back in the day. It, I'm sure it's gone up since then. If you can even get a car anymore because of the shortage. So um, that's the other issue that they're running into. So you got that. You got, like I said, the equipment. If you do the computers on there on themselves, it was well over two hundred thousand dollars to equip and install everything that we need in those twenty-nine units. Um, like I said, it included the papers, uh, mobile uh, to have access to that, to include wireless services. Like I mentioned, the, the canines are in excess of fifteen to seventeen, just depending on which, which firm you go with. And that's per dog. Um, and so the security dance, it was about a hundred and twenty, I think it's what the, the state of the lot it is and that's, it was right about what we had gotten as the, as two quotes, but that one should be paid for. Personnel, um, that's, that's gonna be the tough one. It just depends on certification levels of the certified or not, or what certification levels they do period. If we have somebody transfer in, that's currently certified, they also base, depends on what they have previous training that they've had, depending on what, what we're looking at.
About a hundred thousand.
Give or take, yes, sir, but the recurring of the fleet, yes, sir, every year. Yeah, the maintenance fee, the maintenance.
The basic dog, car, computer, we're just a clip over that hundred.
Yes, sir. And those go, if those dogs are usually good for, if they don't change something in a lot like they did here recently or they don't get injured or something, they're, they're usually good for ten to twelve years. Um, this is the second set of dogs we've had since I've been here, now that it's two thousand and one. Roughly, give or take, yes, sir. Yes, sir. No, they're, they, they, they last as long as they're, well, taking care of it, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, regarding the, the drug dogs, are those dogs gonna be trained differently now that the marijuana laws have changed?
Yes, sir. They will not be imprinted on the marijuana scent. They're only gonna be all the other narcotics except marijuana itself.
Okay, thank you. Also, where are those two certified uh, applicants from?
Uh, one of them is an old employee of ours. Uh, one of them is, uh, he was working for the sheriff's office and it was currently working somewhere else and uh, uh, he has applied, interviewed and is going through the process as we speak.
And the other one?
One is here globally. He was working in Mobileville. He has about fifteen years of law enforcement. He is currently still certified according to the state of New Mexico. He just has to meet this year's man, uh, biannual uh, maintenance hours. And he will be good.
And do you, do you still have laptops in, uh, within your department that are available? Or MTDs?
We don't have any installed, but we do have, we have a few that were given to us that are older from Lee County Emergency Management. Um, but like I mentioned, they're, don't even know if they can even be updated. I gotta see what year they actually were. I've had them for year and a half or two. Uh, so they're, and then on top of that, they already had them seven plus years, if not more. So it just varies. Uh, yes, I do have some, but they are older.
How many are there?
Probably fifteen-ish.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I was just curious.
Yes, sir.
Chief David, Jack, what you, what you mentioned. Staff in his priority.
Yes.
Work would then be number two in line and technology not being number two.
Fleet would be two and equipment and the vehicles would be three, yes, sir.
Yes, that's right. Fleet would be staff, fleet, technology, technology be in the laptops and this.
Bring in the fact into.
No reason why I mention because like the, uh, I want to say like the, the, the drug outs and so forth, you know, we have there's potentially have resources out there is uh, in the sheriff department, HPD, just worst case scenario.
And there are a lot of those are being uh, done away with as well because they are also imprinted. So that, that's the issue that we're running into countywide or New Mexico-wide. So that's like, there's a fact that nobody anticipated this happening. Um, and that's where it came and got everybody in.
And, and I understand that, Chief, uh, what I would refer to is that uh, currently or of course that, that financially, uh, you know, that's what I'm saying is
Absolutely.
Prioritize and everything, prioritize would be staffing, uh, fleet, with technology.
Absolutely.
That, that's where our folks.
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to see a plan of one year, two-year plan, especially if we not think we've addressed that overnight, but we have to be with treasury dogs. Uh, or, or fleet. Also would like to see if we have models of two thousand and ten to auction model and see if we can, can get or.
They're currently, it's, it's, we're currently still using those.
Oh, it's not a lot of time, just to use.
Oh, oh, okay. No, no, absolutely. What happens, no, no, no. What happens is when we purchase a vehicle from the police department.
Yeah.
If it's one vehicle or five vehicles that we did, that same year, one or five vehicles go right back to auction.
Yeah.
We, we don't keep them. Uh, we might keep them for sixty to ninety days. This is a spare case, something happens, but they all go straight to auction.
What are my, my fleet issue? I know when you, fleet, they switch to the maintenance and so forth, so that would
Basically maintenance.
That would take it away from, that would be a cost analysis that we'd have to, to look at on the maintenance side, what would be safe there. I'd also like to include that, that, you know, I made the decision as well right here for freezing positions. I think sometimes if we looked at bigger picture, freezing positions costs over time. So it has, sometimes it can have a ripple effect. So I think we need to take that into consideration next time we freeze positions.
And then, and then I'll be honest with you, sir, it does for a while, it is good for the officers because it does give them an extra money. But at the same time, it's, it's, I'll be honest with you, it's starting to, to well.
And you know, I, I, you know, I was reflecting on, 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 on stuff that we make decisions on the past. But it's, you know, this board is, it makes decisions based on what was presented. If we're not presented with a big picture, uh, who made a poor decision, I don't think the board has made poor decisions. We just make their decisions based on what was presented in front of us. Uh, I, I feel like being more involved in, in uh, current operations, I find that, that a lot of questions should have most likely been answered, but a lot of materials never presented that to us. For landing across the board, for short-term and long-term planning from the previous administration, uh, both in the financing and the management side. And uh, after quality continued that route, we will. Because uh, they can take their day with these great, maybe just to keep their jobs. That part of this, uh, Commissioner, again, you have mentioned to me before, network oversight. All we do is reanalyze what's presented to us, we make that decision uh, based on our what has been presented to us and that's why we're, where we're at today. And, and right now, we're gonna plan for tomorrow, can move away from this, not the fact that I, I perceive a better level. If we use a little bit of plan, the board is more uh, cost, uh, both say, Commissioner Bowles as well as Commissioner Combs is always uh, more, 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 more information from, from staff and so forth, uh, to make better decisions and um, be more transparent, because that's the terminology, be more transparent with staff to make better decisions. And I totally agree with the board. Commissioner Bernard, uh, he's also played a big role on Hudson, that's how it's, border commissions, but I just uh, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. Appreciate the knowledge. Uh, this is the foundation of, of tomorrow because uh, we're gonna have to find ways to get wider to speed in, on this public works sector as well as the law enforcement. We're gonna have to make changes on uh, the, in order to accommodate our, 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 our GRT, because GRT does not support what is supported yesterday, and I'm talking about five, ten years back. So I think we'll go home this evening, we'll probably think, think about what we can do to uh, cut costs, but also ensure that the we're giving the best amount of services to, to communities as we can provide. And uh, sometimes you have to just go back to basics and uh, and figure it out. That's where we're at today, just going back to basics and building the foundation and building up from there. Sometimes it takes something like COVID to uh, put you in that situation. I think this was happening with us. But uh, I appreciate Treasury Dog coming on board. It's been six months since we made this change, as well, we mentioned this Saturday. We had to have a clear picture where we stood financially before we could make a meaningful change. I know uh, Mr. Bowles had a lot of concerns, uh, one, you know, pushing, pushing uh, to get papers where we're at, we're at. Uh, and I, I certainly understand that as well, it's from Mr. Combs. I just wanted to know where we stood financially before we, we've got at the table, met at the table and, and now we know we've got a last year behind us. We've got our year budget uh, approved by the state. We are uh, taking care of all our liabilities. We're, we're, we're handling our finances just right. We just don't have the excess for any we need to uh, address the issues we currently have. So uh, we're looking into bonds, uh, either refinancing some bonds. So that way we're not uh, looking into having another loan out there. We're looking into some of these uh, fundings that are available throughout with the feds and the state. Finding resources to uh, gather some, I'm hoping that uh, we can, our system, you know, time faction that, that the, the public will appreciate and see that the, the city of Longton is, is uh, certainly stronger, better tomorrow, that's for sure. Anybody else? I don't think he comes.
We're gonna bring up the moot point or we just?
No, no.
Yeah, city manager.
Oh, city manager.
Yes. What's your plan?
Oh, okay.
What's your plan?
Okay. Wait, well, in this, okay, one of the city managers. I believe what we have in place financially and a manual work for her does, we really, we have finances, we finance.
So I'm gonna disagree with you right now because you're basically getting rid of my convenience center to the savings, to there to run. So again, what's your plan? Your plan to stay as it currently is?
No, no. My, it's not to be here as long as I need to be. But one thing about this, I'll, I'll put it as a political sample. I guarantee you, if I get somebody from outside come in here and be a city manager on this current situation, they brought him out of town like in one year. I promise you that. If you're gonna make hard choices, hard decisions, it's gonna be this board that's gonna make them hard choices and hard decisions. It's gonna be someone in this board that's gonna have to, to push this.
Yeah, it's really non-hired place.
No.
Really need to look at a city manager. So what I'm saying.
Bring in a city manager. He has a good resume. If he's gonna accomplish what we, what we set up. And if he doesn't, if he doesn't, no, no, if he doesn't, then we're gonna be back where we're at.
Well, I disagree. I just wanna get them to sit back.
But I say, I say to the commissioner, I think we take care of business, put us on the right track and then we need someone here. Because it's just like a mild lightning here. Uh, next city manager, one of our next city manager, one of the class of all trash, we told him directly, cut costs, push back in the black. He did so. All of his opinions swaying in a negative way with him, they all went against. He, he was only doing what his board asked. And when he did so, brought him out of town. And I feel like it's us to be responsible for the change, move the city forward. And, and within three months, four months later, we'll have a city manager. We'll say, hey, we can have a city manager because now we have uh, everything in place. But you can bring the city manager to town. With our, our current situation, even on our financial situation, it's an additional cost. We haven't even made, we haven't even made the year of ninety days, probably a hundred and twenty days before we even have this solid waste spot. And then the cost of savings on top of that, it's not like we're gonna get our eighty thousand cost of savings that day. You're looking at, we're looking at a whole year period of cost of savings of over a hundred something thousand.
So it's still, you're, you're looking at way different, but um, it's fine. You don't wanna go that way. I think. So I'm not gonna be very clear during this session. I know we still got the fire department. We already have Billy Bliss already this evening, so um, I don't need you to be rude. Can you make it short?
No, no, he's not, he's not.
Pete's been burning here last week.
You got, you got basically done with this.
More stuff to present.
No, no.
I just seen you looking at me like.
But the jacket here, I'll say, in Jack, here's the city ride right back. If they bring somebody in for enough, maybe you should put it on right back.
I think bringing a manager in to run the business like it needs to be run and us run what we need to do is the best decision. So I didn't see a lot of problems with what we have going on. Granted, we have, we have a better understanding of what needs to be done, but we still need an implementation implication tool and that guy is the city manager. I'm just telling, these guys do a great job at their jobs and they're doing better than I'm just agreeing to disagree with you. So um.
Because you're gonna bring someone in, you're gonna have to learn what's wrong, analyze what's wrong. Six months later, you lay out a plan. Six months later, that's much further with time uh, in, in moving the city forward. So I say do it now, do it within the next ninety days, get a city manager in here. We have a plan laid out and you will. I, I strongly encourage this, because uh, if you're in here with day-to-day operations and you see what all the posts are created, you see what's uh, this land out in the place. And you see what all the votes are created, you see what's uh the slam out of the police department, water, we don't have time. We don't.
We're just agreeing to disagree, again, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Is there any other? Yes, sir.
If I may just chime in, uh I just wanted to say that based on what where we're at right now financially with the the city. There's no way we can afford to bring a city manager in, I know that's our plan, but uh right now I think it's it's a not a priority. I think we're doing okay where we're at right now, where we have places functioning, it's keeping us afloat, but our our main priority is to save money, not spend money. Because we don't have that money to spend, so uh yeah, absolutely, I I'd like to have a city manager in place. But there is no way we can have one or or even uh put one in place at this time, not until we get our house in order. Then we can, we can uh uh obviously look for a city manager, but I don't see that as a priority right now, just my two cents worth, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Turn to further discussion. Do I have a final motion? Sure, both would make a Mr. Bernard say goodbye, both, turn to other discussion. No other discussion, both call motion.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Deo?
Yes. We need to adjourn.
Good evening, guys.